I can hear you.
You do?
Yeah, I'm gonna hang up now.
Okay.
Sorry.
How about stop video?
Hmm.
Turn it off for me.
I don't hope it's all or not.
Protecting out.
Three lights, oh, it's all.
Can you hear us online?
You got, you got.
Turn your back switch.
Your water there, he got the bathroom in here.
Yeah.
I hear nothing here.
What do they got?
I guess.
You can hear it on scanner, but they got something taken off. You put it into the system. You don't know. When you look at it soon.
How you available?
Can you guys hear someone?
What?
They can hear us.
Yes.
Yes, you can?
Yes, we can hear you. Mom, can you hear?
We cannot hear you, so hold on real quick.
So you, you cannot hear us speaking?
Yeah, you're, you're maybe.
Try it now.
Uh, can you hear me now?
No, we cannot hear you still.
You said. We feel it. Like I can remember my first.
This one?
Meaning what it tells us.
Okay.
It was.
That's the same one.
And he was spitting back as he's.
You remember that?
In the pill.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Whoa.
Look at you, man.
Been a long time.
Yeah.
Glad they looked it up. I've been tired of years and then down there. And. Then three. April. You're a bitch or something like this. They. I'm part of it. I cut three quick. Yes.
Let's do one, two, one, two.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it was, uh.
I didn't see that they come back.
Tell the inner. He just didn't know. He just don't like. He was a while or. Yeah. But he really came to his.
But I guess.
He went up to.
Went off.
I was on, I got on like. Two thousand. It, it.
If I.
I rode the first. And you know, right nervous about what I would be getting anything since.
Important to.
The worst thing I've seen come across my plate since I. Was when you know, first you pad and then to build a city.
Right.
We call it a million. That was, that was. It has to go back there. That was a big project.
And, and those.
That's true.
They don't accept that. They want us to. As. I mean, we were. These are our stairs setbacks. We need it. Not.
That, that was.
It's nice. I got. I just got. Boys, so.
It's, it's the guy.
They cut my time down.
Hello?
It is. Now, could everything else?
Come with the one, two, one, two. Hello?
No, it's okay.
The other. Oh.
Can you hear me? Yes. I hear you, mom, can you hear me? I can hear you, but supposedly they can't hear us. Why that is.
That's not an error.
There you go. Champ. Those are the.
Do things as channelers that they.
In order to hear them, they have to unmute it, right?
Yeah.
You're good, I can, we can hear you.
When I went to.
Well, from what I.
Leave your settings alone, you don't have to touch nothing else. Okay. The problems are on their end.
I have the main volume.
There was four rules we put on. We changed channel and go hold them up front. That's what says.
Two hours.
Basically, they won't give them. And they did. They took from the. He was left with a bad name.
And you just. I had to. Play. From the game.
Oh. Farming audio.
True. And I've been accepted to the county.
They get on.
They tell you it's beneficial.
He gave, he gave it.
That's why.
He gave that land that grace.
Yeah.
He'll kill grace. He's doing what he's. But damn it. There's a ton of people that's.
That power switches on.
People that was on.
No.
Yeah.
All right. That's what it is. Let's see, what about this?
Okay. Now we can't hear them.
They're trying to correct the problem, there is a young lady working on it.
Okay, well, we only have one person on Zoom, so. All right. We figured it out, we're gonna get going and I'll explain it to them.
Can you hear us now? What? I'm trying to see if they hear us.
I like this news.
Ma'am?
Yes.
With our, something with our system is wrong, like. I'm not gonna fix, so what, what I'll get you to do, if you, while you're hearing the presentation, if you would send me an email with your comments, questions, I can read those comments and questions. Um, if you wanna send an email with any comments or questions after you hear the presentation on the respective requests that you're tuning in for.
So what? That's an unfair advantage.
There's no way that I can, I can't hear you at all because our, um. Our complete, our audio thing is completely off, but you can email me and I'll have my email up live, um, to, to view.
That's an unfair advantage. It absolutely is. So how is it that you can hear us, but they can't hear us?
If you would, ma'am, can you chat me in the chat box?
You hear us?
How come you can't hear the rest of you?
I can hear you, so I'll type you, hold on real quick. All right, guys, sorry about that, so something's actually messed up in here. Uh, Ashley, she usually helps, she's sick, but I showed her the back, there's a screen that's supposed to be lit up, and it's not lit up and all the power's on, so the IT guy's gonna have to fix that. Um, so that's something that's just not repairable.
Couple speak over the, over your phone and then into the mic.
So, yeah, there's, um, two ways we can do it, so I'm gonna, right now I have a chat up that they can speak, if they'd like to speak when the presentation, uh, occurs. If they would like, I could send them my phone number and they could call in and speak through the phone, if they wanna speak through the phone. Um, I'm gonna give them the option.
Hmm.
Put in your, send your phone, send your phone to.
Help.
Mom? Yes. I'm still failing to realize how you can hear me, but they can't hear me enough. I think maybe they can. Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a button down bottom.
You guys shouldn't cut that wire.
Bottom what? Bottom right.
Supposed to go.
What about it? That says chat, yeah. Gotcha. Yeah, but chat will give her the number, here, call this phone number, cause we're gonna call in now. All right. Hold on.
Do they hear us?
They can hear us, yes.
It's ironic, we can hear them. But I heard him before.
Turn everything off.
I hear you too.
Yeah.
That works. That's what that, he got.
I just did that back there, I turned it all off and it didn't, didn't work. So. All right, guys, Mr. Chairman.
Start.
Ashley, uh, mom, you're gonna have to. Yes.
Welcome everybody here, we certainly have a forum. Same Jennifer's not coming.
Five, four, zero.
From her.
Wait, Deidre, hold on, honey.
All right, what you, uh. Eighty old minutes, last meeting, write many pages, I'd write a long meeting. I think motion. Motion made in the second, all in favor, making no mistake, and I. All opposed, same side. This is the second. Mars.
What is it?
And, uh, let's say the. Board supervisors took up all those.
Okay. Final five.
Last Wednesday, and I think everything passed.
Yeah.
And wasn't much discussion on any of them, the only thing to discussion on was county land up there. Very much discussion on that, well, a couple of them got up, talked with them. But they tabled that, so they got a little more.
Nine oh five, what?
Can you old business, anybody know, uh, that's kinda what I was bringing up on old business.
I can't hear you.
New business. We have a special exemption request for Mr. Yoder.
Three, four, one, five.
All right.
Can you see the screen, mom? Yeah. Okay. Do you have that phone number now, cause you're gonna have to talk through that phone number? It's five, four, zero, nine, zero, five, three, four, one, five. Yes.
For a stationary sawmill.
When you get ready to speak.
This is property located at two, two, nine, two, zero, St. James Road. It is, uh, tax parcel, sorry, tax parcel twenty-eight, dash, three, dash, one, and the eight-five zoning district, uh, which our agricultural district, it's in the rural preservation area. Again, this gentleman, Mr. Yoder, is requesting the special exception, uh, permitted use of a stationary sawmill. Here we see, uh, from a sort of pretty far aerial view of the property, it's this parcel right here that my mouse has cursed over. Uh, the, the individual owns this parcel and this parcel immediately to the east of the property. Uh, his home is located here, um, and then he has like a twenty foot by eighty foot structure with the sawmill located here. He originally met with county staff and had operated under the portable sawmill, which is a divided use in the eight-five. He, uh, as the, as it grew and, and demand for his milling operation grew and intensified, he, which, you know, he didn't really know whether to expect or not. Uh, we reached back out and asked him, based on that growth, if he would like to go for the stationary, which would give him that permanent use authorization to use that property for the sawmill. He agreed, uh, that that's what he wanted to do, and so that's what brought him here tonight. Um, this is St. James Road that my cursor's following along here. This is Amelia Springs Road here. Um, you have, uh, Little Creek, which is from the sawmill, it's about twenty-two hundred feet, so a little less than half a mile to the rear. I think a family member, an individual by the last name Yoder, owns a property here that abuts them on this side. Again, he owns the parcel immediately button on this side. And then the Walker family owns the property here on this side, that appears mostly wooded in this G I symmetry. This is a closer up image of the property. This twenty foot by eighty foot structure roughly, um, is the structure that the mill is under. And then I have a picture over here for you to show you. Um, this picture was today, so this is unexpected stop by. I didn't call him beforehand, stop by, this is what it looked like today. Him and his two sons were in there milling. Um, when I drove up, they were milling, uh, the two things they had out ready here for pickup, um, was boards they had milled that would be taken to Stewart, Virginia for hardwood flooring and some larger, uh, material here that will be taken to crew for railroad ties. Um, so that was the amount of inventory right there that they had stored on the lot and the mill was actively running, they were actively running it when I came up. Other than that, I don't really have a lot of information. Uh, again, that's just, it's a special exception use authorization. Uh, this, this, uh, gentleman has, um, you know, immediately elevated that it's gonna be something he'd like to do that permanently, whereas a mission party that he thought it might be temporary. That's not all I have for you all.
This building here is not the building he was planning on putting a permanent one in.
That's the building that will remain in tonight, is that correct, Mr. Yoder? Yep, that's the building that will remain in. See, the portable, the portable use authorization is more for logs that are coming from that property or nearby properties. So let's say a logging outfit moves into an area and someone wants to mill some of the logs that they're logging. They would set up, set that mill up in that area so that it would reduce the transportation of those logs from wherever they're coming, cut to the milling. So.
What?
These pop up and someone is using them and they're bringing.
I can't hear you.
Logs and stuff.
Did you call that number?
Planning on.
Not yet.
Mill for a long time. Business, they can operate.
Damn.
Mill.
Mute your butt, your phone, your microphone.
Or in that definite amount of time, they need to go.
What? At the bottom where it says unmute? Uh huh. Or it says mute, put the mute button.
Questions? Any member had?
It's on mute.
How long has it been a temporary? Summer mill?
How long has it been temporary?
Uh, I'm not sure on that. This year, how long has it been temporary? Versus, versus. Why, well, twenty, twenty-three? Yep.
But he's done right. Must be doing a lot of love. January to May, five months.
I'm not sure, I think in, uh, you could ask that. These are the two individuals that are calling it in. They're, uh.
Hello?
Ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, when it's public comment period, we'll let you, we'll let you know and you can, you can see.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
So is it song over there now?
That's the mill, the mill that's there now, the mill he intends to use. Yep.
Temporarily permanent.
Mister hours of operation.
Could you speak for that, Mr. Yoder? From seven, one to thirty.
Just, just during the week, on the weekends.
Questions or comments before we open the public here?
How many, how many log groups do you have, and what kind of the volume goes through there, or are you anticipating?
Uh, at this point, we're doing about two hundred logs. So I get that one.
You know, I can't even hear what they're saying.
Any more questions before we open the public here? And then I'll open the public hearing. Um, so those that are on lines, please state your name and address.
My name is Audrey. My name is Audrey Walker. I own that adjacent property. Uh, it's the Washington property, my father purchased it in early nineteen forties. I never had a problem worrying about whether that property was gonna be toxic when this is all over. I know there's a lot of toxicity that's caused by sawmills and people in the area, if they thought about it, they wouldn't be very happy about it. Now, uh, I, I understand you've been there for what, a few months? However, why didn't you have a permit before? That's a question that's unanswered for me.
What did she answer?
Now.
Her first concern was the toxicity from a sawmill, and the second, uh, the question was why, why you didn't have a permit originally from the.
When everyone in the area was invited to this meeting, why didn't you have a meeting then, before it even started? Now, you're adjacent to my property. The stream, Little, Little Creek in the back of my property runs the extension of that property. If somehow, I, I'm not even gonna say if, cause eventually that water will become toxic with something. Number one, cutting trees. Trees contain formaldehyde anyhow. Are you gonna be treating those trees? The timber? Making wood, I imagine you already are. Those are questions I need answered, and I think the community needs them answered because any, any toxicity that hits the water in that area is going to affect everyone in that area. You know that as well as I do, you probably know it better. So I would like answers to that because I'm trying to eliminate something in the future. Because if that area becomes toxic, Mr. Yoder will get lawsuits. The county of Amelia will get lawsuits. Big time, maybe that doesn't matter to anyone except me at this point because I see you only invited adjacent properties and property across the street where there isn't anyone.
Does she, does she live next to the property?
It doesn't matter if I live there or not, I own that property and, and.
Is it timber?
It will decrease the value of that property.
Do we get an address? Do we get an address from her? I didn't hear an address.
You need an address? You need an address, I sup, I, I presume you have that information in front of you, but I'll give it to you again. I'm at Seven Woodgate Drive in Monmouth Junction, New Jersey. I own that property, I pay taxes on that property, I want to keep that property safe. Your neighbors should want, the other neighbors should want to also because they will be affected by the sawdust in the area, by the sawdust landing on the crop in the area, by the trucking noise that comes into their area. And that's not talking about the noise from the sawmill itself. I guess this wasn't presented to them before Mr. Yoder, uh, started his sawmill?
Ms. Walker, the comment period is a time where you can speak freely, and then when you're done speaking, at that time you would stop and you're allowed, you're allotted time within, and then the planning commission will continue on. So you're.
I, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear all of that.
Comments you'd like until you're finished and usually do three minutes a person, and then at that point, the planning commission will continue discussing the matter.
In other words, you don't wanna hear my grievance?
She have all, has she made all her points?
No, we, we, we wanna hear any grievance and all grievances that you may have. We just want you to know that it's not like an open dialogue per se, where you ask the commission questions and they answer. This is a time where you voice all your concerns and then you would, you would hand over your speaking and, or you would, uh, stop speaking and then the planning commission would move on and do their discussion over that.
Well, I, I, I think my daughter has some comment also, is she allowed to speak?
Of course she is, she's more than welcome, this is public comment, so, but it's just not a, a back and forth question answer, it's more of a comment period for you to say your comments, and then the planning commission will move forward after your comments are completed.
Get her dog.
Yeah, I didn't hear you. I think you're allowed to speak.
And, um.
I can't hear you.
We can hear you. Yep.
Well, because I'm. Reason this topic. For nineteen forty. Wood dust. Exposure to wood dust. A variety of adverse health effects. Threatful effect. Will pose a non. And cancer. Contact with the irrigate, irrigating. Retinal rejection. The respiratory effects of wood dust exposure. Humanized. If our research on cancer, I A R C. Parasitogenic to humans. Without. Sawmill, therefore. Thought, uh, with them. In addition. There is. In addition to the health effects of wood dust, air and dust. With products, manufacturing. When manufacturing. Blackwood. They produce. It's all. The next grievance that we had. That are being used, as my mother has already stated. The health. Associated with, with dust. Old. Formaldehyde. Dust. And chelotirinol using a. And chelosurinol using the processing of some work. The volume and physical properties of chemicals found in sawmills poses a wide range of health hazards. Now, I also want to mention that this is all coming from the Department of Labor website. So, this is already, um, information that has been verified. And documented. But. Contains all of the toxic ingredients. The solvent was. Many types of formaldehyde. Any of the issues that you're finishing with five? Pretty terrible. However, that separation from. Most of the. With fossil generator may result in impact to air quality of. Next grievance, noise. Sawmill and. Overdue elevated noise. Voice. Found this. Of an environment. And. The nineteen forty. It happening from. The main opponent, chainsaw is. But you're also. Traffic gets in the neighborhood. In this residential area.
Where is it?
Like, I. Like. Where. Um. Now.
Right, what? Address.
Ms. D J Walker, could you, uh, state your address, your first name? We need everybody's address for the record that you spoke.
It's twelve. Underwood, one word, U N D E R W O O D. Court. In Burlington, New Jersey. Zero eight zero.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
They grow crops. What type of crops they grow?
We have a question from a planning commission before you, Ben. Mr. Bates asked what type of crops are grown on your property in St. Jake, Rhode Island?
Eastern of that.
I don't know.
So it's crops, corn.
Corn, wheat with a diesel tractor.
That would like say some property question.
Good.
So it does, okay.
Yeah, we just never say that he thinks they were soybeans and corn.
Okay.
I believe it's soybean and corn. Um, but I might have to verify that. I know that over the years, there have been other products grown on that property.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm gonna hang up the phone now, okay?
Um.
Can you still hear me through the meeting? Because the public comment period is over now that you guys are finished speaking, okay? Well, can you still hear me through the, if you, you can hear me through the regular audio, so you'll just still listen into the meeting, okay? Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else like to speak for against? Seeing, seeing and hearing no one, I'll close the public comment. Turning back to the planning commission members. Yoder, you just, you just saw on lumber. You're not finishing, um, you just saw a log, from what I'm saying.
Okay.
It's a hardwood and hardwood pine.
Is it a van mill or a lamey van?
What, what, what are you doing with sawdust coming off there? You're just setting that off and process somewhere or?
It's, uh, getting loaded into a chip van and it's. It's getting hollowed away, yes, sir. That's correct.
So you're blowing your dust straight into the, the van.
Into the van. As I got a chipper, yeah, I got a chipper. My slabs go into the chipper and sawdust goes in that also, straight into the van trailer. Okay.
They have noise here.
Uh, it's, it reminds me of like a, like a grain dryer on my farm. Like it's on, just like a, like a hum. You know, like the grain dryers that we run during harvest season. Um, I mean, I, I set it the road and, and when I pulled up to his driveway, I could hear that hum. But I rode my windows down, down the road. It's not like, you know, I could hear that hum once I got to into the driveway.
So the wooden property around here pretty much blocked that for the most part.
And I was, how, how close is uh, their, like, is their land, the one that touches it?
Yes, sir. So the people who smoke their land borders this property. Uh, let me pull the presentation back up.
Oh, is that?
He's a west.
Couple of wood, wood between them and sadly.
Oh. How big a field is it?
Not that big. Very small.
Eastern, small, small fields, but just in the area. I know, I thought it looked more like timber.
Yeah, mostly woods.
Lots of woods, right?
Just, uh. This is the map here. You're, if you follow my, uh, my mouse, this is the parcel, the subject parcel for the request this evening. Uh, and then if you follow this timbered area here that runs all the way back to Little Creek, uh, um, and then back, like I said, the topography sort of goes up and then back down through here. All this timber area, not this parcel here, but then some on this side is all.
The, the open land on the.
These are the fields over here.
Yes. I think it's about, that'd be something.
You say timber or timbered?
It's timber. It's a, it's actually. Standard, it's standard.
Pine or mixed or?
I think it's mixed. There, you guys can probably speak to it more than me, the, the woods.
It's, it's hardwood log. It's hardwood.
Looks like hardwood, yeah. It's gonna be green.
Green.
So it must have been harvested at some point in time then.
Years ago, let's speak so.
Always big stuff. And then here.
Do you guys have any more questions for Mr. Yoder? I'll leave him the mic if you do, just for the recording.
Does he have any intention of, uh, of doing any, uh, pressure treating?
No, sir.
So you wouldn't be using any chemicals anyway? Only you would have us on a van saw, you don't even have that much dust compared to blades.
We're all lumber.
Is, is the mill run on electric or gas?
At this point, it's on fuel.
On fuel.
If, um.
Going to go to electric eventually, hope to.
That is if I get, if I get this exemption.
So if you go to, if you get it, you want to go to electric.
Yes, sir.
The diesel.
Okay.
Less.
That's really.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you got any plans to work on your entrance?
Well, I guess I don't at this point, but I, I mean, I'd do whatever I needed to do.
Is it hard to get a truck in there? It looks hard when I ride by.
Not, I mean, it depends who the truck driver is.
Lots to do with it, doesn't it?
No, it's not, it's not bad.
Most of your trucks come in and they tractor trailers or they straight axle?
Tractor trailers.
Well, it looks to me like if he's taking care of the sawdust, it's going away. And as far as the explosive part of dust, that, dust can be explosive, but it's gonna have to be in a contained structure and, and a lot of it compresses. And if it's an open building like that, it's not gonna be, it'll, it won't ever explode. That, that, that's not gonna happen.
And it's not dry.
And huh?
It's not.
Not dry.
It's not dry. And he's, if he's taking any sort of runoff, it'd be coming from leachate coming out of the sawdust, well, he's taking all that off site. Right, getting rid of that. And salt treatment, I know that you gotta build a building for that, and you gotta have containment and all that stuff for that salt treatment stuff, because it's nasty stuff. You'd have to, you'd have a whole new facility for that.
If there's any water D E Q gonna be.
That's right.
Dealing with the water situation.
So if he, if he went to treating, would he have to come back before us?
Well, he would, we would reach back out to him. He wouldn't have to come technically for a it depends at how it evolved, right? So if he turned it into like a pulpwood yard or, you know, um, if he went into pressure treatment and stuff, he'd probably have to come back.
I thought he'd try that to meet the E Q.
That's a little more intense. This is an agricultural zone district, as you guys know, and timber is an agricultural product.
Oh, yeah.
And an accessory use of timber is being able to mill it. And it's, it's just like other agricultural products that you grow and then having an accessory use elevated on your barn. It's just a use permitted by special exception, not permitted by right. But he started out doing a smaller mill that was, uh, temporary, was a by right use, meaning uh, lady's question, which was why didn't he need a permit originally? It was a by right use to do a portable sawmill. So he was, he was operating without a permit, but he was in compliance. He didn't need. Now to do stationery, he needs a, uh, special exception.
How far is the property line from the sawmill? And it looks like a pretty good distance in there, but.
Uh, it's not very far. My, my property is not wide.
I know, but.
Yeah, it wouldn't be quite that far.
Somewhere in that neighborhood, forty, fifty feet?
No, it'd be a little closer than that.
Closer than that?
But is no, is any houses or structure closer to that vicinity?
Uh, there's one out by the highway. My house is the closest.
No, I'm just talking about from the other, the, um.
No houses.
No houses, no houses or anything else besides that.
All the property?
Other property.
Well, there's a, oh, on that property have a sawmill on?
No, on the other piece of property.
Neighbor's.
The neighbor's property.
I don't, I mean, I can't see any from there. I don't know.
Is that some distant somewhere back here?
Sawmill, yeah, okay.
The next house that becomes a permanent sawmill, does that change the designation from accessory building to something else?
Well, he, you know, if he's really far off the road, um, it would I'd have to go back and look and see what was pulled when it was. You know, it could be, could be an ag structure, it could be as an accessory structure on the lot.
I, I just wanted to spend all this money and go through all this aggravation to get this thing done.
Yeah.
And then somebody say, well, he's not meeting the setbacks now. He's got to move it all or, or pull it for me or.
But right now, you think he's far enough off the line? Just off the top of your head?
I'm saying he's definitely, it's a hundred feet from the roof and about, it's, uh, a primary structure. And it's forty feet from the side. And so I'd say he's, he's probably within that, close to that range. He, he's probably three hundred feet off the road.
Looks like close nine hundred.
Or forty feet or something.
Accessory structure can build ten people talking about. But I don't know if the destination of accessory, it stays that, would you be permanent sawmill, you know what I'm saying? If it ended up the destination of the, of the terminology changed to setback or not.
And looking for this, the next.
Do you have any intention of drying, drying any lumber?
Was that a question for me?
Plan on drying in a lumber?
Not in the near future. I mean, if I would, I'd come back to y'all, make sure it worked.
Uh, other than, uh, air drying?
Yeah, I don't even air dry.
And now what you saw, I'm pretty much.
As soon as I saw it, I ship it out.
So you don't need that much, you don't want that much on stock left on you?
No, sir.
Doesn't make any money sitting there, does it?
No, sir.
Y'all have been to saw, to, to sawmill, to the salt treatment facility?
Yes.
And I mean, I've had to do it, it's, it's the fire department style of it. It's gotta have, um, gotta be on concrete so nothing gets into the soil. It's gotta have a concrete, painted wall around it. If anything leaks, you can't get away from there. It's pretty strict.
Pretty strict.
And stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's some pretty nasty chemicals in it. And I understand your concerns about, about if you saw treatment, yeah, there is a bunch of dangerous stuff there, but he's not doing any sort of wood treatment stuff. Uh, I don't, doesn't seem that dangerous to me.
Means no more, not much different than the fire sauce.
Really? Probably less shavings in the fire sauce.
Yeah, probably so, with a van.
The creek it was referenced, does this flow off of this property onto the Walker property?
It was on outside.
Does your creek, does the creek go to the back of your property?
Well, the creek's on back behind my brother's property.
Oh, back to your brother's property?
Yes, sir.
It runs the length of my property.
Water on your property?
No.
Far as creek?
No, sir.
I mean, you got a well, but I'm talking about running water from a creek, over branch.
Is that what looks to be cut over property behind yours? Is that your brother's? That you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Any more questions or comment?
Yes.
We got a call back from the.
Mama, you still on the phone?
They had some additional questions and comments.
I will be in about two minutes.
Hold back now.
Huh?
Hold right now, because Charles is on the phone.
Bring them out. Now, we just want questions. I'm not interested in reading something.
I'm not, I'm not reading anything, okay?
Okay.
I wanted to make a statement. That Little Creek runs the length of my property. Um, I guess you, you already know that, though.
Well, I just found out it's on your property, not his property, but.
I can't hear you.
I said it's on, it's on the back of your property, but it's on the back of his brother's property, not his property.
It's about two thousand feet from the lumber to the creek.
Uh, um, I, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there plans to, to, uh, Are there plans to to uh extend that sawmill?
To expand it?
To expand it, yes.
Not off that property, I guess.
No, ma'am. He just said he was not planning to expand. Now, he wants to cut the lumber that comes in, get it out as soon as possible.
He's treating that lumber, correct?
No, ma'am.
He isn't.
All he's doing is taking a log, taking a bandsaw, sawing it in the. One by sixes, two by sixes, whatever people request. So it's no chemicals, no treatment at all. It's just a saw. And all the dust and all the sawdust is going straight onto a tractor trailer, which is hauled out.
What's the plan for the future? He must have a plan.
Well, any anything that gets any bigger, he has to come back before us. So he has to keep it at pretty much this size. Because of the width of his property.
Mm hmm.
Any other questions?
I will have some.
Yes, I have questions. I am the husband of the daughter, and I'd like to know who's gonna be the person that's gonna enforce the rules. On this facility. Who's gonna oversee it long term? Who's gonna make sure that he's staying in the guidelines and the codes of the area? And who's gonna who's gonna monitor the environment to areas of of his property and the surrounding area?
The county's responsible for that.
So.
Just like a solar farm, anything else, the county is responsible for following up on any. Buildings or additions.
So if he violates, if he violates that.
He loses his special exemption permit.
Sure, but my but my property, because of toxicity.
Why would it be toxicity, ma'am? He's not using any chemicals.
Right now.
Yeah, but right now.
Right now he isn't.
Yeah, right now he's not. You guys would not be monitoring them twenty four seven. How often are you gonna go in and inspect this inspect his business?
You tell me what he's saying. I don't know what the county's ordinance is on that.
Yes, he's not that good, because he could tell you that apples are growing today, but tomorrow he's doing orange juice.
See, I uh I'm I'm really trying to eliminate a a a problem for the future. Which don't seem to be that far down the road, okay?
Did you cut your timber, ma'am?
Pardon?
Did you cut your timber that's on your grandfather's?
On my dad's property?
Yeah, did you cut that timber?
No.
It's never been cut?
Pardon?
Has it ever been cut?
It was thinned out a few years ago.
Well, that went to a sawmill and somebody had to cut it up.
Of course, it wasn't at my back door, though.
Well, somebody's gotta make a living.
Well, they don't have to do it next door to me. Put it that way, because, no, look. I know where you're going, uh because, you know, I received a letter uh by Thursday that was sent on the twelfth. For a meeting on the twenty second. That told me a lot. That told me a lot right there.
Well, we can't anticipate postal service, ma'am.
Yeah, but you can anticipate who owned that property next door, because it's right in front of you.
Well, everybody that had a joint in property got a letter.
Well, what is your name, by the way?
Name's Larkin Moyer.
Pardon?
My last name is Moyer, M O Y E R.
Okay.
I just happen to be the. Plant Commission's chair right now, but it's nine of us.
Mm hmm. See, I'm trying to eliminate maybe a possible lawsuit or something in the future. You know, because I'll have to come after Mr. Yoder. I'd have to come after Amelia County. You know, I'm trying to eliminate that, and I hope you respect that as that. Because the value of my the value of my property is gonna go down. Just because he's there. If it's polluted, that's worse yet.
Any more questions?
You aren't interested in answering my questions anyhow.
I'll answer your question if you ask it, ma'am.
I asked a lot of them today when I talked to Mr. Deal, okay?
Okay.
I answered a lot of them today, and I, you know. A lot of insight. I know I don't live there, but that is my property. I pay taxes on it, and it's up to me to try to protect it.
Do you have any siblings, ma'am?
I have two left. I had a lot of siblings.
Oh, all right. Are they part of the property?
Nope. There are two houses. There are two houses that sits at the at the road. Right by the front of the property. There's another house, my parents' house, that sits. Up on the on the property.
Okay.
Were they notified?
If they were land a joint landing owners, they should have been notified.
They don't join.
If they do not join it, they would not be notified, but it would be listed in the. Uh county paper as to when the public hearing would be. There will be another public healing hearing at the Board of Supervisors meeting following this meeting. They have the final say on it. We just make a recommendation to them. With what we've heard and what we feel is the right position. But they can change and do totally opposite of what we recommend.
When is their meeting?
It'll be the third Wednesday of next month.
June third.
The third Wednesday.
Oh, the third Wednesday.
That'd be come the week of the twenty or something, June twenty one. And you will get a letter on that.
Okay.
When was this here? This is Deidre speaking. When was this hearing put in the county paper?
It was May fourth and May eleventh. Do you want us to send you a copy?
Um, no, I just need to know the dates and why it was such short notice of my mother being notified.
You can look it up on the website, Amelia Monitor. It should be there May four and May eleven.
Okay, and I can have anyone represent me in the in the boards of directors meeting, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They just need to, or you can send a letter and we'll be read. With any of your questions or comments on it. And you can also have someone speak on your behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating. Any more comments? Plant Commission members?
You have any more questions, Steve?
Um, no, I think that's it. You just have to get make sure your attorney is aware of the date.
Okay, I think this is all in vain. Okay, good enough.
Well, what's your pleasure? I mean, we.
The way I see it, there's not the it being runoff, because he's putting all sawdust in the in the trailer, be shipped away. He's cutting raw lumber and not doing any treatment. I think I think he's supposed of a misconception that he's gonna be using chemicals to treat it better. And I think they don't understand that he's not gonna be doing any sort of treatment or using any sort of chemicals on the site. He's just sawing trees in the boards.
I went by there too and looked at it. These people were to drive by there and actually see it, they wouldn't have all this question, right? Well, and and. Well, I guess they're thinking about large sawmills.
And and if they decide to cut their their timber, they'll make more money off of it, because it doesn't have to be hauled very far to be cut up.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, I know. So with all that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to we pass it on to the board supervisors with the recommendation.
Second. Motion made in second to pass the board supervisors with our approval. And it'll be another public hearing at their meeting on June twenty one. Everyone understand the motion? All in favor of motion making no more saying aye?
Aye.
All turn the same sign, motion carries. Be up to them on the twenty first.
The whole thing was they 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 would just listen.
Had you wanna do the comp plan? I mean, I read it. Does the public have any access or comment period? Most of this is just. Them pulling information that you give them together and then come to us. See if that information seems right at a set fee. But then, don't we have public comment period as to what the public wants after this?
Of course, there'll be your standing public comment period for um. The hearing of the planning commission and the hearing of the board in terms of like recommending adoption.
They specifically had it.
Thank you, buddy. That's everything for you guys. Y'all have a good night.
Comp plan committee before I'm on that committee now. And so when we done revisions in the past. We had to sit down, have a lot of meetings to look at what needs to be changed and everything. If if I'm looking at this correctly, did the Commonwealth Regional Council is gonna do that for us?
So that this is what we would it was it's gonna be a hybrid approach. So the Commonwealth Regional Council will facilitate, help facilitate. According to their proposal, three meetings um with the planning commission. These could be open to the public. These meetings, of course, any meeting of the of a public body is open to the public. So they'd be open to the public, and if you guys wanted that that to be an open dialogue, then you could set that parameter and have the open dialogue there. During those three meetings. We could have additional meetings with the comp plan committee, of course, through this process. But they're just gonna provide some facilitation and some oversight and some support, particularly with. Information that it's hard for me to to mine and put together and um. Easy to understand figures like all the demographics, the spending and leakage, some of the changes that have gone on. Since twenty seventeen to now. So they're gonna provide that type of staff support.
So who makes up the regional Commonwealth Regional Council? Who who who's on that?
Um, it's an organization in terms of naming people.
Well, I mean, it is it. I don't know.
It's an organization we and I suppose I go speak to this a little bit.
Seven counties, we've got a council, media, not away, Prince Edward.
Cumberland.
Cumberland, Charlotte, maybe.
And that and that's where I was getting at. Is it based is it based in Southside Virginia or is it based on Florida, Virginia somewhere?
I think it's actually based in Keysville at the industrial park.
Okay.
And this is what they do. They do grants for water systems and they help counties on.
I'm trying to get things.
Stuff like this, not paperwork stuff.
Okay, I didn't know what I just didn't know what they were.
And the last group that did it was. Uh, company associates. They're out of Charlottesville. Another common group that does them is the Berkeley Group. They're a large state group. I believe their headquarters is in Roanoke. Um, I the Berkeley Group on Friday. So we will get a proposal from them. But we budgeted twenty five thousand, and because the regional council is already an organization, we financially support. They gave us a quote of six thousand. It's a very reasonable quote to provide that staff support. We do have that extra budget room, that extra nineteen thousand, in case there's extra meetings needed or stuff like that for this upcoming fiscal year. So.
In the past, we've sent out surveys. I think we still didn't do that.
Yep.
And with the presence of social media now, you know, whatever whatever means we had to do to get the most input. I think I read it. It only got like seven hundred forty responses back last time. I'd like to double that, at least fifty.
Where you go to open ten to nine thousand population, nine thousand plus populated.
Yeah, so hopefully we can get whatever means we can get to get to to get the citizens to tell us.
Population count is like thirteen thousand five hundred.
Yeah. Even anything like that, you know, any anytime you try to get that, you feel lucky if you can get about eighteen to twenty two percent.
Well, if you get that much, you'd be lucky.
Yeah. I see. That's pretty much max you gonna get.
But public input and opportunity for public input is.
Very.
Is required.
Yeah.
Uh, in development, obviously, plan. Confidential plan permitted. Numerous times when it's meant to go. And uh, so it's that's that's a part of state.
In the past, I'm I'm not sure how well that survey was advertised in the past. It needs to be like a. An ad put in the paper, that they can, everybody knows in that website, they could go to this site and do a survey of the county's future.
Well, same way on their Facebook page, when I when all the county handles.
I've never looked at the county's Facebook. I don't either. I don't even know what Facebook is.
Some low cost things we did, I was a part of the comp plan update in the last locality I worked for. We printed off little things that you could fold and set on a dining table. Um, and we took them to the local diners and it would say like, please, there was a QR code, please use this or. Go online or come here for a paper survey for the comp plan. And so we went around and like put them in places people would be, you know, commonly. We also sent it through the school system. So we sent the survey to the school system and asked them to disseminate it to all their students, since. Everyone, all the students had Chromebooks. And so if you got all those students, you got a young feedback. On things, you try to go to your uh the YMCA and stuff to get some of your older citizens feedback. So. Basically, what this discussion is for is just to get you guys geared up, because we need to get this going. So to get it on your mind that this next several months, we're gonna start activating the comp plan committee, getting the planning commission. Reviewing information and starting to try to get things going to get the current one reviewed and updates made as needed. Because that's what's required by the code. You don't have to update it every five years, but you have to review it every five years to determine if updates are necessary. It's twenty seventeen, so we're, we passed that year. So we're we're there where we need to go ahead and get going. And my philosophy, some people spend a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars on a comp. On the comp plan book. And I just don't know if. We we as a fiscally conservative community can justify spending that much money on the document. Because I think we can come together and do it a lot if we do have that support for some things we can't do. And that's why. We reached out to the regional council, because they we knew they would be a less. Uh costly option, but they can still provide that support. But we haven't made any, we haven't solidified an agreement with them. So that's that was something I wanted to show you, what they proposed, to get your thoughts on that too, in general.
Awesome. By having those five or six other counties, they have some idea of counties similar to ours as to what. Those counties may have done to give us a better opportunity to get.
And they're working on two, I think, two other localities right now. So they wouldn't really be able to even get involved until September. Just because of what they're already doing staff wise.
But there's there's a lot that uh it does not change. From one comp plan to the next. I mean, it's a same. You know, you're not gonna have. A a lot of revisions. At least we haven't in the past, because uh you're still. You know, pulling the same community and and ends up. Every time coming up pretty close to to the. The same things that people desire.
Any other questions or comments about what we received? But we don't need to take any action. It's up to the board.
It's just informational and just to get your. It's just informational and just to get your guys' thoughts. And if you guys would just reach out to me, I'll keep you updated. I'll probably schedule a comp plan committee meeting here soon, and we'll just start with reviewing the comp plan and then moving forward with like going section by section, reviewing things and seeing what we think is out, maybe not outdated. Because it's not that, it's really six years ago, it's not that long ago, but seeing what maybe needs to be refined language-wise in terms of what's, how it's written. And then, of course, all the demographics, all that stuff is, our population hasn't changed much, but the demographics definitely has changed. I, I'd love to show you guys sometime. Amelia, there's only a certain, uh, it was a small number of ca- uh, localities that had a net positive in migration over the last, since twenty twenty. So all of Northern Virginia, all of Tidewater have had a net negative in migration, meaning people have been moving out of those areas. Well, Amelia County is a locality that's had a net positive in migration. We've actually had a net positive in migration over one and a half percent. It's been a one and a half to two and a half percent net positive in migration. There's only a few localities that haven't had a net positive in migration over two and a half percent. Chesterfield, Goochlin, Powhatan, all the counties in that Western Richmond area, Louisa, have had a plus a positive net in migration of over two and a half percent. We're right behind them in terms of net in migration, but our population has an increase. Why do you think that is? We've had, we have an aging population, so we have a natural decrease in terms of population growth, meaning our death rate is outpacing our birth rate. But as we continue to have what we have, I don't know, I, I don't wanna claim we're top ten, but we're, I think we're one of the ten localities that had a net positive in migration. And I could show you a map, I have it on a presentation, that I'd show you of all the localities, how they're cu- colored. The more we have a net positive in migration and the more the aging population is in, uh, at end-of-life stage, that's gonna sometime flip, where not only do you have your net positive in migration, you also have your net positive population, natural increase, where your birth rate starts to outpace your death rate. So I don't by any means say we're about to enter a population growth like Chesterfield, Powhatan, and up like that. But people are wanting to move to Amelia. We have a net positive in migration and we're, we're one of those select counties that can claim that. Dimwitty's not claiming that, Notaway's not claiming that. We're one of those counties that can claim that. And it's because we're in this Western Richmond area where people are wanting to locate.
I can't blame people not wanting to leave, going to jail.
But as we know, as more people come in, and I know you guys probably look at me as a come here, but I was raised in Dimwitty County, so I'm a slightly, slight come here. As people come in from Northern Virginia and Eastern Virginia and other places to these areas, they have a different idea of how life should be lived.
Sure, we've already seen it.
And so I just think that the comp plan, it really is important that we go through this comp plan this time, because it's gonna be another five or six years, and just really make sure the language is reflecting what we want done. Because all the decisions are made based on, or they should be.
This period was also affected by COVID. And, and, and a couple of ways. But obviously, uh, some people wanted to, wanted to get out in the boom jobs.
Different part about all that is it's ten to twenty years in the future, because look at it, obviously changed in the last twenty years right here. Because that's hard to project, hard to foresee.
But you look at it in terms of twenty-five years.
Right.
It's the way we comp plan is done.
She did, yeah, so, yeah, twenty and twenty-five year projection.
So twenty-five.
I'm always surprised by people that do come here, they love the rural life of Amelia, they typically want a lot, keep that way.
Yep.
I've seen.
But then they wanna change ways. Some would hear like what they left. They take the good, give it the best. They don't want the bad with the good, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen that in, well, the public here, the other night, most of them were, hadn't been here less than ten years, so I mean.
I, I've, I've always been amazed by that. People come from Middle East or foreign countries, they come here to get away from that life, and then they demand to be changed our ways to match their ways, but it's not, because they don't like it.
But that, that's how people are.
I don't understand you.
Alright, I don't have anything else. I wonder if any member has anything else. I see everyone coming out, projecting, uh, ladies speaking.
You remember.